All right, good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District Meeting to Order. It is Thursday, April 15th, 2021. It is now 6:31 PM. We're at the Rio Grande City High School cafeteria. I want to thank Mr. Peña and his staff for hosting us today, tonight. Thank you. I'm going to begin by calling this meeting to order and then with a roll call for purposes of determining a quorum. Is Dr. B. Bebenau present? Mr. Elizaveralasquez Jr.?
Present.
Johnny Pope IV?
Present.
Noi Castillo?
Present.
Basilio D. Vareal Jr.?
Present.
Mr. J. Peña?
Present, V. Azul.
Thank you, sir. And myself, present. Eric Ramirez. So we do have a quorum. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Vareal, will you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vareal.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to give you the authority to take, since we have a lot of presentations set for, with a lot of children that are here, I want to make a motion to give you the ability to move the agenda as you see fit tonight because we have a lot of presentations from children here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Vareal. There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
A second to that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Before we proceed, there is someone that's working tonight whose birthday is tonight. He's secretary at the superintendent's office, so happy birthday, Miss Omar Clark. Happy birthday.
I hear she's 25 years old.
She's gonna kill me, but she's working tonight. I couldn't help it, so happy birthday again. 16?
Okay, I'm sorry, man, for putting it a little older, then.
All right, section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of March 9th, 2021, and the special board meeting of March 30th, 2021.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item, section three is presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. We'll proceed to, because of the number of students that are present, let's go ahead and we'll skip section four, public forum, for now and proceed to section five, recognitions. We can always return back to public forum. Under section five, recognitions, the first one is band and mariachi, all state students through a high school and real high school. Mr. Alex Rodriguez, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Ramirez, or president, Mr. Peña, superintendent, and audience. We are proud to announce that this school year, we have 11 all-state band and mariachi students from Rio and Gruia High School. Next step is state marching band contest for both high schools this fall. Our bands are already rehearsing in person with great pride. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our parents, administration, Mr. Peña, superintendent, and all board members for your help and support. With that being said, I would like to introduce Mr. Oscar Gonzalez, Gruia head band director, followed by the all-state band and mariachi video. Once again, students, congratulations.
Good evening, school board president, Mr. Eric Ramirez, school board members, and superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña. My name is Oscar Gonzalez and I am the head band director at Gruia High School. We would like to take this time to recognize and acknowledge all of our state, all-state musicians. These students spent numerous hours in preparation to earn the highest achievement a musician can earn in the state of Texas. The rigorous process of elimination through which these students went through was hard enough and adding the stress of the pandemic on top of that tested their strength and character, their perseverance, and their pride as RGCC ISD musicians. The all-state musicians are as follows. On French horn, two-time all-stater Daniela Garcia from Rio Grande City High School. And for the first time, we have an all-state mariachi in the state of Texas, and we have two awesome musicians that made that. On guitarone, we have Elian Villarreal from Gruia High School Mariachi. On guitar, we have Jordan Lasso from Gruia High School Mariachi. On trumpet, Daniela Diaz, Gruia High School Band. On trumpet, three-time all-stater Sergio Villarreal, Gruia High School Band. On clarinet, Kalin Salas, Gruia High School Band. On alto clarinet, Stephanie Garcia, Gruia High School Band. On tuba, three-time all-stater Mario Gloria, Gruia High School Band. On trombone, three-time all-stater Hiram Flores, Gruia High School Band. On trombone, Edgar Garcia, Gruia High School Band. On trombone, one of the few freshmen, Christian Garcia, Gruia High School Band. We also want to take this time to acknowledge all of our sensational teachers who worked hours to prepare these incredible group of students. Mr. Gabriel Hernandez from Rio Grande City High School. Ms. Monique Olivares, Gruia High School. Mr. Robert Diaz from Gruia High School. Mr. Emmanuel Garcia from Gruia Middle School. Mr. Alfonso Rodriguez, Gruia High School Mariachi. And Mr. Orlando De Leon, Gruia Middle School Mariachi. And myself, Oscar Gonzalez. As a music educator, I want to mention that the best indicator of our teaching comes from the great success our students achieve in their competitions, but the biggest reward is the humble and simple words of your students saying, "Thank you for helping me." Reflecting on that last statement, none of this is possible without the support of all of you. Your dedication and support for our programs lead to the excellence these students were able to accomplish and achieve. Through your support, the work of their teachers, and the students' preparation, we are able to create scholarship opportunities that could help pay some, if not all, of their future higher educational expenses. Thank you for acknowledging our students today, and congratulations to all of our RGCC ISD all-state musicians.
At this time, we would like to congratulate our 2020-2021 all-state band and mariachi students for their sensational accomplishments despite the circumstances. Being selected as all-state musicians virtually is a completely different accomplishment altogether and proved to be rather challenging. But as always, you rose to the challenge and surpassed, as you have always done. Thanks to your exceptional teachers who have always been there with you every step of the way. On behalf of our school board of trustees and myself, thank you for your hard work, dedication, and on your accomplishments. We are extremely proud of you.
On behalf of the Rio Grande City CISD family, we would like to congratulate our 2020-2021 band and mariachi CMEH and ATSSB all-state students. What a great accomplishment and honor. We are very proud of you. Keep up your musical talent. Thank you for representing our school district with great pride and for your dedication of being a passionate music advocate. With that being said, we would like to thank our parents, administration, Mr. Peña superintendent, and school board members.
At this time, we would like to congratulate our 2020-2021 band and mariachi CMEH and ATSSB all-state students. What a great accomplishment and honor. We are very proud of you. Keep up your musical talent. Thank you for representing our school district with great pride and for your dedication of being a passionate music advocate. With that being said, we would like to thank our parents, administration, Mr. Peña superintendent, and school board members. At this time, we would like to congratulate our 2020-2021 band and mariachi CMEH and ATSSB all-state students. What a great accomplishment and honor. We are very proud of you. Keep up your musical talent. Thank you for representing our school district with great pride and for your dedication of being a passionate music advocate. With that being said, we would like to thank our parents, administration, Mr. Peña superintendent, and school board members. At this time, we would like to congratulate our 2020-2021 band and mariachi CMEH and ATSSB all-state students. What a great accomplishment and honor. We are very proud of you. Keep up your musical talent. Thank you for representing our school district with great pride and for your dedication of being a passionate music advocate. With that being said, we would like to thank our parents, administration, Mr. Peña superintendent, and school board members. At this time, we would like to congratulate our 2020-2021
Picture. That's Ray Ramirez and Mr. Jorge Peña.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Peña superintendent. As you all know, this has been a great year for the Rattlers and Gators sports. We've made, I think, history in the sense that we've won many district titles and many more teams have made the playoffs. But tonight, we're here to recognize the accomplishments of our soccer boys teams. First up is our Rattlers soccer team, Coach Garcia and staff. I want to congratulate them for a great year. They were, they came in second in district, a very close second by one game. They advanced to the area, the by-district championship and defeated the Bronzeville Veterans Memorial by a score of four to one. So that was the first time in history, Coach Garcia, I believe, that we are by-district champions, so congratulations to them. At this time, I'm gonna ask Coach Garcia to pass, to come forward and I introduce his players, Coach.
Good evening, guys. Good evening. Yes, I'm sorry. Good evening. This is my son, Omar Garcia. He's gonna be introducing the Rattlers.
Very well.
So the boy holding the trophy is Brian Rios. Up next, TJ Huerta. Up next, Delphino Martinez. Up next is Jesus Rios. Up next, Edgar Cruz. Next is Leo Huerta. Up next is Alexis Acevedo. Next is Jesus Pinales. Up next is Elazar Castillo. Next is Angel Salinas. Next is Jaime Trevino. Up next is Javier Trevino. Up next is Jesus Peña. Next is Robelín Montes. Next is Juan Villarreal. Up next is Javi Romero. And then next is José Octaviano. And assistant coach, Mr. Tony Garcia.
First of all, we're returning nine starters, so that's a good thing about this year that we're gonna make some noise next year, too. Okay? I didn't have anything prepared. I didn't think I was gonna be speaking today. But we do have some tokens of appreciation for the board members, boss signed by the kids and by the coaches, so thank you very much for your support. The kids really appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You do? Okay, yeah. Before we continue, I'd like Mr. Coach Garcia to just mention the all-district selections. I think it's a great honor. It was an honor for me to watch these young men play out there. They did a great job. In behalf of every, all our staff, administrator, Rio Grande City High School, we're very proud of you, young men. Coach, congratulations. And we're already set for next year. We're proactive. We're getting ready for next year because district championship, here we come. All right?
The district selection committee, we chose Robelín Montes to be the co-MVP of the district. Robelín Montes. And the co-defensive player of the year for the district was Javi Romero. And we were allotted four first-team all-districts. Edumar Garcia, portero. Javier Trevino, defensive player. Edgar Cruz. And Brian Rios, the one holding the trophy. Second-team all-districts, José Rios. TJ Huerta. Juan Villarreal. And Jaime Trevino. And honorable mentions for the district was Jesus Pinales and Roel Lerma, not present.
Next up, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce our boys, Sartiti from Gruia. They are this year's district champions and by-district champions, so again, great job, young men. They've been working hard all year, and again, it takes hard work to get to the top, but it takes true character to stay there. They've had a great run the last couple of years, making the regional tournament and winning that in district and by district. So again, I'm gonna have Coach Vanessa say a few words and introduce the players. Coach Vanessa?
I would have thought I'd be doing this. Anyways, as you know, do wanna congratulate, or not congratulate my boys, but also say thank you to the, to the board. Also, you, most of y'all have been very, very supportive of us for the last five, six years. I also like to thank Mr. Peña and Dr. Salinas and Mr. Osuna and Athletic Director Ray Ramirez and Athletic Coordinator Abel Gonzalez for, for giving me the opportunity to coach these boys and be a part of their lives. I'd like to introduce my kids. Number, number one, our goalie, Urban Corona. Next up, it's a little bit out of order, we're numerical, but Angel Garza, he is number nine, that he was carrying the trophies. Number five, Jesus Rodriguez. Number six, Fabian Reyes. Number seven, Pio Aguilar. Number 10, Ruben Chávez. Number 11, Carlos Alamío. Number 13, Marcos Scott III. And number 18, Martín Sosa. Next, 21, Pedro Sarinana. Number 22, Jonathan Hernandez. Number 24, Alan Cantú. I would also like to let the board know also and our guests here that these boys also received many accolades as well in, in our district and notice. Just give me a second here. Our offensive MVP for our district 34A was Pio Aguilar. He was the offensive MVP. And our newcomer of the year, Alan Cantú, he is a freshman and also cousins with Pio. And so we should have a, we, it's kind of a family there. Also, Urban Corona received honorable mention. Jesus Rodriguez, first-team defender. Fabian Reyes, second-team defender. Martín Sosa received honorable mention. Luis Villarreal, he's not here with us, but he also received honorable mention as well. Angel Garza also received first-team as a forward. JT Trujillo, second-team as a forward. Ruben Chávez, first-team as a mid. And I'd like to also throw in, Ruben is also a sophomore and second, second-year starter on the varsity. And number 11, Carlos Alamío, received honorable mention. I'd also like to introduce my assistant, Renee Garza. And our other assistant had a family emergency, Victor Savantes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Osuna?
Thank you, Mr. Vanessa. Members of the board, Mr. Board President, Mr. Adolfo Peña, superintendent of schools, I am very proud of these young men as they played hard this season and they were able to compete with other teams and they came out on top. As you can see, I want to thank them for the addition of two new trophies to our trophy case. I also want to thank our parents that are here today, that are out there watching us on Zoom. I do want to thank you for their support and let's, let's hit it hard next year. So thank you very much.
All right, up next, we have a recognition for Rolando Barrera RN and staff.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Peña, members of the board. At this time, we would like to recognize Mr. Rolando Barrera RN and his staff. Rio Grande City CISD, together, of course, with the state, city, county agencies, organized a community-wide effort to provide vaccines to every adult in the community. The district, through the leadership of Rolando Barrera, met with local and state leaders, Judge Vera, State Representative Ryan Guillen, and Dr. Falcone to prioritize educators of the district and expedite the vaccine efforts in the community as well. It was Mr. Barrera's persistence which led our community to realize that forming this critical partnership of the city, the county, the state, the school, the local entities would be the most important step of getting everyone vaccinated and getting this community back and running. Rio Grande City CISD is fortunate to have this young man providing us guidance, patience, and most of all, tenacity for our district families. He has made himself available to answer phone calls, take text messages at any time, provide direction, organize COVID testing sites, and provide the school district with the largest and latest information on COVID information. Rio Grande City CISD would like to recognize Mr. Barrera and his
All right. Up next, we have a recognition for Rolando Barrera RN and staff.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Peña, members of the board. At this time, we would like to recognize Mr. Rolando Barrera RN and his staff. Rio Grande City CISD, together, of course, with the state, city, county agencies, organized a community-wide effort to provide vaccines to every adult in the community. The district, through the leadership of Rolando Barrera, met with local and state leaders, Judge Vera, State Representative Ryan Guillén, and Dr. Falcone, to prioritize educators of the district and expedite the vaccine efforts in the community as well. It was Mr. Barrera's persistence which led our community to realize that forming this critical partnership of the city, the county, the state, the school, the local entities would be the most important step of getting everyone vaccinated and getting this community back and running. Rio Grande City CISD is fortunate to have this young man providing us guidance, patience, and most of all tenacity for our district families. He has made himself available to answer phone calls, take text messages at any time, provide direction, organize COVID testing sites, and provide the school district with the largest and latest information on COVID information. Rio Grande City CISD would like to recognize Mr. Barrera and his extraordinary frontline workers and, in our eyes, superheroes who kept our students and staff and community safe during some of the darkest days this school system has faced to date. I respectfully recommend and submit for recognition, Mr. Rolando Barrera RN and his gracious staff for all of the generous work they have done during the past school year and with this pandemic. We never expected this and I always joke around with him, did you know when you signed up for this job that you'd be doing this? And he just laughs and doesn't say very much. But, you know, from the bottom of our heart, Roland, we want to thank you. He answers every phone call, every text message. He always has an answer and his approach is just always very, he listens and that's something that we don't always see in our profession. We don't always listen. We want to react. And he listens and he shakes his head, nods his head, and he always has an answer or some kind of direction for us. So, Mr. Barrera, we want to thank you on behalf of the administration, the school board, Mr. Peña, and the rest of Central Office for all of the work you have done, not only for our school district, but for the community in general. Mr. Barrera?
Good evening, Board President Amírez, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Peña, staff and community members. Our department is honored to be part today. You know, it's an enormous endeavor to be part of getting back to that normalcy that we all speak of. You know, vaccinating is a key and we are doing very, very well. I want to thank our staff. You know, the staff that we have at our districts is our nurses. They're going out to our campuses and testing for COVID. We are vaccinating students. I mean, vaccinating students, grandparents, mothers, brothers, sisters, everybody that would like one, okay? Nursing is about compassion, empathy, and willingness to help others, okay? We go to sleep tired at night, but we know that when we go to sleep, we know that we gave a vaccine to somebody and, you know, their life is a lot more protected compared if they didn't have it. We continue to work with all entities to make sure that, once again, that normalcy that we speak of is here as soon as possible and as safe as possible. And I can't say enough about the staff that we have. Our nurses on campuses, from RNs, LVNs, nurses aides, every single one. So we do have nurses that go help us out at the clinics and we have nurses that hold down the fort at campuses. You know, we continue to COVID test our staff members at request and they're educating everybody on prevention measures, on preventing COVID and from, you know, all sorts of other diagnoses as well. There's other things other than COVID as well. And once again, we thank you for recognizing our tremendous department that I'm blessed to be part of and honored. And thank you so much to all our nurses and you all, okay?
Thank you.
We do have a few of our nurses that are here today. I want to thank them for being here. Not all nurses could be here today, but we do have about eight of us. So, a few nurses that we have today are Ms. Elma Cruz from Gruia High School. We also have Mrs. María Guajalupes Alinas from La Unión. We also have Ms. Celinda López from RMS Early College. We have Ms. Carmen Castillo from Magnet Elementary. We have Ms. Crystal Flores from Special Services Department. We have Ms. Vanessa Hernández from Alto Bonito Elementary. We have Ms. Sandra Raymond from La Unión Elementary. We have Ms. Martha Zarate from Gruia Middle School. We have Mrs. Nelda Solís from Ringo Elementary. And once again, thank you so much to our amazing staff that continues to do better every, every year. And I'm, once again, privileged to be working here with everybody. Every department has contributed as well to the vaccine drives, you know, from our curriculum department, our security and police personnel, every single department that I can think of helps out and I thank everybody. Our nurses continue to help out our community as best as we can and we're here to help as much as possible. Thank you so much again for your time.
Mr. Barrera, the only thing I would say, every time I see this young man, I call him Superman. And there's no kryptonite that can hurt him. To be honest with you, nobody has an idea that this man and all his staff and the superheroes we have here, like he says, security and all the staff of RGC CISD have been responsible for vaccinating many, 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 many thousands of people in this community. If it wasn't for his staff and for this district, I guarantee you, a lot of the people would be without vaccines. You, sir, are really truly Superman and no kryptonite is ever going to hurt you, sir. Congratulations.
All right. And the last one on the recognitions is HEB, Texas Loves Teachers Tour Event.
Good evening, Mr. President, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent, everyone in attendance here tonight and everyone watching live. In 2002, HEB launched an initiative that would recognize educators throughout the state of Texas. This being their 20th anniversary, they decided to do something special. They decided to go through to the actual communities and present tokens of appreciation to all of our educators. We have 23,262 campuses throughout the state of Texas. 23,262. They selected 50. Out of all those 50, we had two in the top 50. One of them, which we're going to represent plaques to tonight, is John and Olive Inojosa Elementary. Miss Orida Zurita? She asked me right away, am I going to have to talk?
Yes.
We want to thank Ms. Zurita and her staff because this shows how motivational and how much you inspire not only your students, your staff, but also the community that surrounds you. Because this recognition came down to just that. For the 20th anniversary, they decided to open it up to the community to vote, to have everybody across the state of Texas to vote for their favorite district, for their favorite campus. And I'm proud to say, like I said, I'll mention it again because the number is astounding. 23,262 campuses, you were one of them that was recognized. Once again, round of applause. The next campus, our middle school, we have Veterans Middle School, also in the top 50. Mr. Henry Cantú? Mr. Cantú, congratulations. Mr. Cantú, once again, like I told Ms. Zurita, this speaks volumes of how you can motivate the members of your community to vote for your campus. Shows the pride and the determination that you exemplify on a daily basis. If that wasn't enough, three districts in the state of Texas, out of 1,029 school districts, three districts made the cut to be selected. One out of Houston, one out of San Antonio, and RGC CISD. With that, I'd like to present this plaque to our board and to our superintendent. Don't be shy, guys. Don't be shy. Directors and principals. HEB and the representatives came down on Tuesday and they held a little parade for our staff. And they said that this was the most spirit that anybody had in the state of Texas. And that speaks volumes of our district and our community. Is that Mr. Science, Mr. Limas? Not Mr. Peña? Cindy Bassan, Ms. Bassan? We need to recognize everyone because HEB told us that it was for all staff and it was a beautiful sight, as we talked about normalcy earlier. It was a beautiful sight to have everybody come down and receive their tokens of appreciation that shows the spirit and the true determination of RGC CISD. Smile bright, ladies and gentlemen. You deserve it. Thank you so very much and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Okay, Section 6, Reports and Information. I don't want report on declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I believe we have the Stark County District Attorney, Gotcha Allen Ramirez, Bernice Garza, Crimes Victims Coordinator, President today with us.
Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. Administration, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month and it's an opportunity to highlight the great work of the Crimes Victims Center of the 229th in conjunction with Child Advocacy Center of Starr-Nidalgo County and the Office of the 229th Judicial District does on behalf of children. Rio Grande City CISD, together with the Crimes Victims Center of 229th in conjunction with Child Advocacy Center of Stark County and Iidalgo and the Office of the 229th Judicial District, under the direction of District Attorney Gotcha Allen Ramirez, would like to declare April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Ramirez, who will be reading the proclamation for the month of April. I know they already celebrated, but this is where he's presenting it to the school board and to the community. Mr. Ramirez?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, general public of Rio Grande City. Thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to read the Child Abuse Awareness Proclamation. Whereas, in federal fiscal year 2020, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services confirmed 68,461 victims of child abuse or neglect, including over 200 open child abuse or neglect cases at the Office of the 229th Judicial District Attorney. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Texas. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for the victims. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social, emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for children and families. Whereas the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economic, and social costs, therefore hurting Texas's future. Whereas the Office of the 229th Judicial District Attorney, the Crime Victims Center of the 229th, whereas Crime Victims Center, Child Protective Services, Child Advocacy Centers, foster parents, teachers, and others work to ensure that children in our community have a safe, happy future. Now, therefore, I, Gotcha Allen Ramirez, 229th District Attorney, do hereby proclaim and have proclaimed April of 2021 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the 229th Judicial District and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for our children and their families. I want to thank you very much for allowing me to read this proclamation. I know that most of you have heard this once already. I had the opportunity and the honor of reading this on April the 1st of this month in front of the courthouse. And I'm happy to say that every school board member was either present or contributed to that day. And many administrators were there. And so I am very, very happy and proud that you have me here tonight. We kicked off this month because we want to make everybody aware of the fact that on January the 1st, when we took office, there were over 200 child abuse open cases in our office. And since that time, the number has increased. So we've made it a priority at our office to fight child abuse. And what we're trying to do is bring awareness to the community, to this community, to every community in our district. In conjunction with that awareness, we've erected billboards across the county. And what we're hoping is that every time one of you sees that billboard, you realize that at the very moment you're looking at that billboard, there is a child being abused either in this community, in this county, certainly in the state, and certainly in this nation. And it's something that we need to fight. And it's something that we need to fight, and I'm so happy that you invited me to read this tonight, because as prosecutors, we are on the front line of fighting child abuse. And as law enforcement, as Mr. Castillo knows, we're also on the front line of fighting child abuse. But as educators, I want you to also realize that as educators, you are on the front line of fighting child abuse, because even in the era of Zoom, I don't think there's any more connection to children than the connection that educators have with children on a daily basis. And so we need to remove the stigma attached with reporting child abuse. If teachers, or educators, or administrators, or anybody in our district and the general community sees evidence of child abuse, please, report that to the proper authorities. You may be saving a life. I would be remiss in not mentioning the great work that has been done by my Crime Victims Center staff in putting this month together. We have various events going on all month. In fact, last night, I spoke to the city of Rio Grande City and read this proclamation. I also spoke to the city of Roma. I've spoken to the commissioners in Jim Hogg County and read the proclamation. I want to thank Ms. Bernice Garza, our Crime Victims Coordinator, for all the hard work she's done putting together all the events this month. Mr. Chema Alvarez, my Crime Victims Liaison. Ms. Anna Flores, my Crime Victims Advocate. Ms. Melody Rosa, another Crime Victims Advocate. Ms. Isabel Molina, a Crime Victims Intern, and Ms. Monica Martinez, a Crime Victims Intern. These people have been working tirelessly, day after day, helping not only crime victims in general in my office, but those victims of child abuse and their families. So once again, thank you very much for having me tonight, I appreciate it. Thank you all very much, and God bless you.
Item 2, Report on Declaring National Assistant Principals Week.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. School Administration, National Assistant Principal Week was April 5th through the 9th, 2021, and the National Association of Elementary School Principals, together with the American Federation of School Administrators, is taking this particular week to honor the enormous contributions of assistant principals to student success. This year, our celebration takes on an even greater significance, as we recognize all that assistant principals, and in our case, deans, because a lot of our secondaries do also have deans, have conquered amid the pandemic, and consider what their ever-expanding and evolving role might look like as we move forward. Through it all, Americans assistant principals have demonstrated unwavering leadership, becoming a source of strength and inspiration for all educators. And I know that we had a bond presentation this morning, and some of the cafeteria workers were very outspoken, and one of the things they said was that COVID never existed for them, and it did not because they had to serve the meals to the children. And one of the things that happened with campus administrators, principals alike, and assistant principals, is COVID did not exist, they had to be out there making packets, being in the front of the line, risking their lives every day to make sure that the educational system continued. And sometimes we don't realize all the hats that an assistant principal wears, and sometimes, and I say specifically in the elementary, when you're an elementary assistant principal, it's just you and the principal. So sometimes you're the counselor, you're the LPAC chairperson, you're the ART Committee Chairperson, you're the bus duty assigner, you're the maintenance operator, so they do wear a lot of hats, and we want to take this time to recognize our assistant principals. And in doing so, Ms. Benitez, together with San Juanita Olivares, have helped me coordinate a little token of appreciation for each assistant principal. So the movies are open again, just so that you know, we have a little movie gift certificate there on behalf of Mr. Peña, school board, and administration, and they put together a little bag of snacks that I think are movie-themed, and they also, if you're aware, Mr. Peña has a theme, and it's Navigating to Success, because he wants to navigate to that A campus, so they kind of took that theme, and they organized themselves, and do you want to bring one of those, so I could show them? Do you have names on them, ladies? So if I can have all the assistant principals, please come forward, and deans, and of course, my favorite, Ms. Andrade, I hope you're here, I said you better not leave out Ms. Andrade. Where's Irma Andrade? Oh my God, look, it's the first one, Irma. So it reads, Navigating to Success, Deans and Assistant Principal Recognition Month, honoring Irma Andrade for your exemplary and visionary leadership to Veterans Middle School and ensuring student success. So we will be giving every assistant principal a certificate, together with a little goodie bag that does have a movie gift card. Where's Ms. Andrade? All right, I'm going to read the names, and the ladies, I know it's a big bunch, you might have to make two rows, but I'm going to go ahead and read out the names, hopefully I did not forget anybody. Laura Garza, Claudia Garza, Brenda Carmona, Mary Lou Garcia, José Chino Inojosa, Ismael Sánchez, Enidelia Rios, Javier J. Garza, Sabas Chapa Jr., Marisa Peña, Adriana González, Maribel Monte Mayor, Mr. Fred Margot, Armando Gutiérrez, Miguel Guerrero, Maria E. Barrera, Mario A. Sainz, Irma Andrade, Tomás Rodríguez, José C. Hernández, Belinda Peña, Leri González, Malinda González, Hernán Garza, César Limas, David Sárate, Mireia Treviño, and Dr. Erica Guerra. Mr. Peña, did you want to take a picture?
Yes.
I think you're going to need two rows.
Find a window.
This is going to be a great picture. I can see the smiles. Thank you so much.
All right, we can continue. Item 3 is Report on Declaring of National Library Week.
Before I go to that item, Board President, I forgot to present Mr. Rolando Barrera with his plaque. We got a little excited, so, Mr. Barrera, if you can please come up, and we can, I guess, if you can go take your picture on the stage, is that okay, board members? Mr. Barrera?
Is he still here?
Yes, I forgot to... Like, like Ms. Ramirez? Right?
All right, now we are on item 3, which is Report on Declaring of National Library Week.
Good evening, President of the Board, Board Members, Mr. Peña. November, I mean, and I keep saying November. April the 7th through the 10th was National Library Week, and with that, we celebrated our librarians, we recognized them, and today, we have a video that we want to share with you. The theme for National Library Week was Welcome to Your Library, and many people ask, what do librarians do? Well, librarians play a very important role in the everyday operations of a campus. They inspire students to read, to learn, and this year, more than any, they were given an additional task, which was to distribute all of those laptops that were ordered by the district, and that the students needed in order to get their education. So it's a short video of themselves introducing themselves, so please.
The theme to National Library Week this year is Welcome to Your Library, which promotes the idea that libraries extend far beyond the four walls of a building, offering many services. The Rio Grande City CISD libraries offer our students the opportunity to explore new worlds through technology, multimedia, and educational programs. Therefore, it makes me very proud to present to you our very own RGC CISD librarians.
Hello, and welcome to the Veterans Middle School Library. I am your librarian, Mrs. Cindy Inojosa, and we look forward to receiving all of our students at our beautiful library that is full of many books, where we host many fun activities, and we strongly believe, as Thomas Jefferson said, "I cannot live without books."
Hello, Radler Nation, welcome to your library at Rio Grande City High School. I'm your librarian, Mrs. Guerrero. Whether you're on campus or online, your library has a wealth of resources. If you're working on an assignment, preparing for an exam, or just want to read a good book, we have what you're looking for. Check us out.
Welcome to your library at Gruya Elementary. My name is Janet Sárate, and I'm the librarian at this wonderful library. I like to think that the library brings the community together to read, to grow, and to learn from one another. That is why libraries are the best place to be. Happy National Library Week.
Welcome to your library at Inojosa Elementary. I am librarian Ambarina Pérez. The more you read, the more you know, the more you know, the smarter you grow, the smarter you grow, the stronger your voice when speaking your mind or making a choice.
Welcome to your library at Ace Elementary. My name is Ana Alverde, and I'm so proud to be the librarian at this school. The library services its patrons and community with many innovative resources and ways to connect with one another. Your library is a place to explore, dream, and succeed.
Hi, everybody, welcome to your library at Gruya Middle School. I'm your very own GMS librarian, Mrs. Rosario Osuna. Remember, everybody's a reader. Some of you haven't found the right book. So what are you waiting for? Stop by your library and find that right book.
So our Gruya High School library, I'm Armandina Bibiarial, a master librarian. Although we strive towards many objectives, our main objective is to develop positive, open-minded, lifelong learners. Thank you.
Welcome to our library at El Leptel Celia Parrera Elementary. I'm Sandra Guerrero, your Longhorn librarian. The magic of our library takes you beyond these walls into wonderful places. We love to bring you books and resources to help you learn and grow.
Welcome to your library at La Nona Elementary. My name is Ms. Linda D. Chapa, and I am proud to be your librarian. This week, we are celebrating National Library Week and all the libraries have to offer. So whether virtual or face-to-face, I am here to serve you. Miss you and love you. Take care.
Welcome to your library at Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary. I'm Mrs. Embarrera, your librarian. Students, I want to encourage you to read every day, to achieve your education goals, and to learn something new every day.
Welcome to General Ricardo Sánchez Elementary. My name is Nancy Garcia, and I am the librarian from the school. Here at my library, we store the energy that fuels the imagination. We open up windows to the world and inspire students to explore, achieve, and improve. We change lives for the better.
Hi, everyone, Ms. Anderson here. I'm the librarian for Ringo Middle, AC2E Middle, and Early College High School. We miss you all so much, we cannot wait to have you back.
Welcome to your Alto Bonito Elementary Library. My name is Patricia Montes, your librarian, and I invite you to visit Alto Bonito Elementary, where the books will take you to the magical.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Cantú, and I've been the Ringo Elementary librarian aide here at Raider Nation for nine years. It is my sincere pleasure to welcome you to our Ringo's Elementary Library. For literacy, exploration, and reading across all genres, it's always a goal we strive for. Go Raider!
To Dr. Mario Iramírez's library. When our students enter our library, they are scientists, explorers, readers, important, loved, and respected. They are the reason we are here. Librarian Cynthia Garcia, Clerk Laura Pérez.
It's been said librarians are the keepers of knowledge, and that...
It's been said librarians are the keepers of knowledge, and that knowledge brings life to our campuses. At RGCC ISD, we have the best librarians in the nation. On behalf of the school board of trustees and myself, we wish to thank all the librarians who do their part in ensuring the proper development of young minds, who without a doubt are destined for great and amazing things that root from the inside of a book into the branches of the world. Once again, thank you for everything you do to illuminate the minds of our young students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number four, report on Duke TIP recognition gifted and talented program.
Good evening, Mr. Eduardo Ramírez, Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools, and all present. Today, I'm here to address and to recognize through Duke TIP recognition from the Gifted and Talented Program. Duke TIP University has a talent identification program known as Duke TIP. It is a national nonprofit organization that has served over 3 million academically talented students in grades four through 12. Collaborating with educators and parents, Duke TIP helps students assess their extent of their academic abilities with above-grade level testing and recognizes them for their achievements. RGCC ISD gifted and talented students enrolled in Duke TIP during their seventh grade year are administered the SAT and above-grade level test. When student results are analyzed and they are compared against other seventh graders and seniors taking the SAT nationwide, we have students that come out and do outstanding performance. This evening, we have Derek Anthony Pratt, who is with us today. He is an eighth grade student at Veterans Middle School, and we would like to recognize him for his state recognition with the Talent Identification Program, for his exceptional performance with SAT mathematics. He is wearing his medal, which is, it would have been through the state ceremony, but unfortunately, two years in a row, they've been canceled due to COVID. But today, we would like to recognize him with our plaque and for your accomplishment. Before we move on, sorry, I had to mention one more thing. He is the son of Mr. and Mrs. David Pratt, who are both RGCC ISD educators. We hereby profoundly respect and would like to introduce you to the Board, sweetie, with this acknowledgement, okay? If the parents can please come forward. Mr. Cantú is a Veterans Middle School administrator. If you're present, sir. And more than anything, for supporting our program, because we don't have a lot of students that do this outstanding performance, so thank you for acknowledging him this evening.
Okay, we can return back to section four, public forum. There was a submission by Jesús Mendoza. Is he present or on Zoom?
He's gonna be on the phone.
No, not present? Okay, he might be on the phone, apparently. Okay. Okay, Mr. Mendoza, you're on the phone here at the RGCC ISD Board Meeting. You submitted an item to discuss, or better yet, a submission to discuss elector hypersensitivity, because we have an extensive agenda to go through. I'm gonna give you three minutes, Mr. Mendoza. Here's the floor's yours. Mr. Mendoza?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesús Mendoza. My phone number is 956-583-712. I have been homebound for more than 10 years, delight threatening electro sensitivity, which is caused and aggravated by exposure to the same wireless micro radiation reaching children and teachers at school. My EHS has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by courts as a physical medical condition and as a disability. It is estimated that without knowing, more than 50% of the population is already suffering symptoms of EHS. Children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, and even the director of the World Health Organization are suffering from electro sensitivity. Please see, we are the evidence that or. Despite that, EHS is reaching pandemic proportions, most doctors are in the dark under denial in continued misdiagnosing and mistreating with harmful drugs and invasive procedures, symptoms that disappear, which is reduced in exposure to micro radiation. A law firm filed a federal lawsuit with evidence of how the cell phones used by our children emit more than five times the levels allowed by federal law. When even short doses of radiation about the federal safety limits causes harm even to healthy and strong adults. And seven law firms are warning school officials of the potential criminal ability of exposing children unnecessarily to harmful micro radiation when an expensive hardwire internet is readily available. According to experts, electro sensitivity is not an isolated set of symptoms, but ongoing injuries to the immunological neurological system, which are progressively aggravating to reversibility by exposure to micro radiation. Some of the symptoms of EHS include pain, swelling of vital organs, swelling of face, head, and eyes, symptoms of heart attack and stroke, rashes, and loss of skin, flu, and allergy symptoms, and stomach, sleep, vision, hearing, memory, speech, concentration, and breathing problems, headaches, palpitations, arrhythmias, chest pain, high and low blood pressure, seizures, paralysis, unconsciousness, nose bleeding, internal bleeding, fever, tremors, dizziness, nausea, irritability, depression, anxiety, fatigue, muscle and joint pain, painful cramps, numbness to pain, burning and dry eyes, eye pressure, blur vision, asthma, testicular and ovarian pain, dry lips, ultra-sugar levels, impaired senses, male miscarriages, and birth defects. Scientific studies prove most doctors are confounding the symptoms of EHS with symptoms of illnesses, including autism, ADHD, dyslexia, PTSD, and heart attack and stroke, multiple sclerosis, fibromyalgia, Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, rheumatoid arthritis, chronic fatigue syndrome, diabetes, and major depression, and suicidal tendencies, as detailed by the request to protect the children submitted to the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, and posted on the case. And wirelesswatchblog.org, wirelesswatchblog.org. Board of Trustees, Superintendent, your attention to this matter can save children and teachers' lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Section seven, recommending approving the consent agenda. The Board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called, that will be approved by consent. We have item one, two, and three. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Item one, two, and three is presented in our board package.
I motion by Mr. Vareal, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Pope. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item one, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Rio Grande City Parks and Recreation Department for 2021 spring volleyball league games for the month of May, RGCC ISD Gruia High School Gymnasium.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to approve, so we can get on with this meeting a little bit? Item one, two, and three is presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items one, two, and three. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on ratification of agreements with Design Group International for Engineering, Architecture Services for the renovation of old buildings found inside the Fort Ringo.
Mr. President, can I, I guess, for expedite in this meeting, can I make a motion to approve item four, five, six, and seven is presented in our board package?
The motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items four, five, six, and seven. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motions carry, or motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on 2021 bond election expenditures, including but not limited to stipends, IT, etc.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eight is presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion on item eight, or discussion or motion, I mean, is there any discussion on item eight? I'm sorry. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on requisitions of 5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate. The only note I have is that there's one particular item that has been taken out and is now item 17 on this particular agenda, so that one's out of the list, and we might have been added a supplemental form. I don't know if anybody has any discussion or a motion on item nine.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item nine is presented in our board package, with the exception of that item that's gonna be placed, and item 17, and any addendums that have been added to, I think I've seen a couple, any addendums that have been added in this board meeting.
Very well. There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Pope, I mean, Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. There's two, is RFP number 20-36, air conditioning HVAC work and repair, and RFP number 21-13, bank depository services.
Mr. President, I move that we approve RFP 20-36, the air conditioning HVAC work and repairs first. Let's start with that.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal for item 10, particular RFP number 20-36. Is there a second with regards to that particular item?
Subject to brief, a second subject to brief discussion.
Okay. There's a second by Mr. Peña. Go ahead, you have the floor for discussion, Mr. Peña.
I just had a question on this one. I know that we had discussed some Esser funds that were coming in, and I think they're coming in in two trenches, right? And so, I think that there's been, I think we've worked with some folks in the past that were able to, I guess, propose some type of, not only energy savings, but also some HVAC units that, I guess, they're favorable to the COVID situation. I guess they have some type of ionization, that they zap the air or whatnot, and I'm just wondering if that's something that eventually would be coming out of Esser funds, and if it does, is that something that, would we still need to continue with the HVAC services here, or, I know we're going into summer, but...
I guess the question is, what is it exactly that's being repaired and worked on? And if, something, if Esser 3 is gonna come in and we can use it to better utilize it, then I don't know if we really have to do this at this point in time.
These are just repairs that are, I think, are done on air conditioners that are broken, basically, right now. There's not any new installations.
I think the agenda has something else in, in, item, another item later down the line that actually...
Item 13, 13 and 14.
That it considers the Esser funds, right?
Yes, correct.
Exactly.
So that's separate from this?
Right now, I think this is just for repairing existing air conditioning. It doesn't deal with that, bringing anything, I don't think, as units. I think, we have a lot of schools, and I think we only have two or three techs for the whole school, so we have that, but we can certainly address that other part in a later date, when the funds come in.
Awesome. And just the issue, it was opened up, the bid was opened up, and we allowed it for the time period, and the only people that placed the bids were these individuals.
That is correct.
Any further discussion with regards to RFP number 20-36? Call in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. We still have item 10, RFP number 21-13, bank depository services. Is there any discussion or motion with regards to that particular RFP?
Can we have discussion before?
Yes, of course.
Okay. And as I'm looking, I noticed that we only have one bank, we have, I think, four or five banks in Stark County, and only one bank bid. Can you brief us on that, I guess?
Correct. We currently had and submitted all to all five banks, and we even reached out right before the deadline, just to make sure if they would be interested, and at this time, pretty much each bank representative said no, that they were not interested in participating in our bid, and basically, we were left with Lone Star.
So, out of all the banks, this is the only one that showed any interest to bid it up?
Correct.
None of the other banks showed any interest?
No, sir.
And if I'm not mistaken, they reduced their interest rate or something, right?
Yes, they reduced their fees.
They improved whatever we have now.
Correct.
What is the length of the contract, ma'am? Can I ask?
It is for two years.
Two years?
Two years.
You have any further discussion on RFP number 21-13? Do I have a motion?
Is it possible to table?
Is it something that is urgent that we decide this soon, or...
Let me ask, when does our contract run out with these people?
I believe it is at the end of the fiscal year.
So, it's not till the end of June, right?
Correct, but we do have to let TEA know exactly how we are gonna go to. If we were going to go ahead and approve this one and not continue with, you know, our extension, then we just have to let TEA know at least as well.
Can you extrapolate? Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. Also, the other issue that we have is with the change of the fiscal year, we have to start the contract with whichever bank we decide to go to July 1st, with our fiscal year. So, if we decide to change, July and August would serve as a transition if we would change banks.
How would we change if nobody else is bidding?
No, I'm just saying if you would decide to table or table the item and decide to do something else.
Can you explain that to me again? I didn't quite understand. Sorry.
I heard you were, the question that Mr. Ramírez asked was if this was something urgent. Well, the only issue that we have, that since we changed the fiscal year, if we decide to go again, and if we would rescind this bid and open it again, we would still have to start July 1st with any bank.
But we're not rescinding, we're just tabling it, correct?
Yes.
We're not saying we can bring it up on the next meeting, correct?
Yes, correct.
Would that be right, Mendoza?
That is correct. You could table it, but again, there's some time restraints that we've got to send into TEA to make sure that they know who our depository are, because they are state and federal funds, so we've gotta let them know, and normally, you wouldn't have to do this till maybe June, because again, normally, we'd start September 1st, but since we've moved that September 1st to July 1st, we actually have to move everything back a couple of months, so either this month or next month.
When do we have to let TEA know, ma'am?
Before the end of the fiscal year.
And our fiscal year ends?
June 30th.
June 30th, so we got a little time, right?
Yes.
I guess the question that I would have was, is would there be a benefit to the teachers if we were to spur a little bit of competition here? I know we've got significant deposits coming over. I know a lot of our teachers and staff bank with the same bank that is our depository, but with a lack of competition, it's hard to negotiate anything. That's my hesitation.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we table it and have them see if anybody's interested? Because if anybody's interested, well, maybe we can do something, but if they're not interested, then we just move forward with it, or what do you all?
And I think with Esser 3, we're gonna have to separate, open a whole other account, so as to co-mingle that with the general fund. It's gonna be, it's gonna be same depository, right? But we might need to open another account.
But we're not, we still have 30, at least, correct me if I'm wrong, today's April, we still have 60 days to decide, correct?
Correct, but we would like to go ahead and allow a little more time before that, just so that we can secure what bank that we are using, so that we are kind of prepared for that fiscal year.
But if we decide in May, we'd be okay, correct? We still have 45 days, correct?
Correct. Now, if you're gonna wanna open up a bid, another bid, then that's where we're on the timeframe.
Right, and if I may, Mr. President, Board And if I may, Mr. President, board members, the other idea would be also to have someone from the administration to sit down and talk to the bank and say, is this your best, your lowest offer? Because I know that they have, they'll always sweeten it up a little bit, so maybe give them a little bit 30 days for them to come back and negotiate with administration to see if they could offer maybe some other, you know, sometimes they won't charge for checking, or they'll lower the interest rate, they'll throw in some goodies.
The only thing like Jay's saying right now is that we're going to have these funds coming in from the federal government, and then hopefully, the bond issue passes, then you're talking a lot, big amounts of money, and you would think maybe they could do somewhat better. I don't know. So maybe, Mr. Peña, you're going to go talk to them again? I don't know.
Yeah, hence the reason, try to put it in the minutes, at least, you know, maybe that would help. But having said that, I motion to table item number 10 with respect to, with regard to RFP number 21-13.
There's a motion by Mr. Peña to table item 10 with regards to RFP number 21-13, second by Mr. Vareal. Is there, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand?
And this would be approving the air conditioning and tabling the bank deposit?
Yeah, we already wanted that one. So same sign, motion carries. Item number 11, consider and take possible action on request to amend voting site for bond election 2021.
I move that we approve item 11 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on contract for Royal County City CISD curator slash grant writer.
Yes. Mr. President, I move that we approve item 12, curator of Fort Ringel. I want to put that into it, and the contract is presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
Second, subject to just brief discussion.
Second by Mr. Peña. You have the floor, Mr. Peña.
It's already been reviewed, right? Counselor, Mr. Salazar?
That's correct. We started this contract because it is a new, even though it's not a new position for the district, but it is a new endeavor for the school district. So we made sure we had an out clause for ourselves, and this is just so that the board knows, and so that the CFO knows also. I made this contract so that, it's going to be a short contract between now and they have to, the board can renew it between now and July 1st, so that we can start all of our contracts starting July 1st. So it's a little short window, and it'll last for one year, and then the board has a 30-day out, but this should be beneficial. I did start that contract from scratch, Mr. Peña.
The 30-day out is included in the contract?
That's correct.
Any further discussion on item 12? There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on resolution giving authority to the RGCCSD Superintendent for Schools to extend funds from the general fund and reimburse those funds once the SRR three grant monies become available.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 13 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on resolution declaring expectation to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Mr. President, to expedite the meeting, I move that we approve item 14, 15, 16, and 17 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items 14, 15, 16, and 17. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
What are we going to do, just real quickly, on Mario Ramirez's fence? Is it falling down, or?
Yes, sir. There's several areas that have come down.
And my understanding is it was not to contract anybody outside, it's simply for material. Is that correct?
That's correct. The fence is in very poor condition, and we are concerned about the safety of the kids, being that that is a...
Sorry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That is a school where we have the most lockdowns, being that it's so close to the river. So we want to make sure that when the kids return back to in-person instruction, that they are safe.
Let me ask you a question, ma'am. I know we're having a lot of problems with illegal crossings, basically, and I know they found a lot of people in, close to our schools. Mr. Peña, have we thought about the possibility of maybe putting electric gates or something that when somebody passes, they can open them and close them? Because right now, we're talking hundreds of people that are being found next or close to a lot of our schools, and I don't see that situation getting any better. Or maybe making some kind of, some kind of study, but what can we do to safe, make our schools much more, not that they're not safe, but how can we basically keep this element out of our schools? And right now, I know we don't have any kids, but we will have kids here in the coming year, and I just think that schools like Mario Ramirez, schools like the ones along, the La Ruya schools, there is a definite, there's a definite problem, and I think we need to maybe contact, I don't know who, police, whatever, maybe consultants, of how we can make that school more safer, simply put.
Yes, sir. We will be studying.
Any further discussion? There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items 14, 15, 16, and 17, second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 18, consider and take possible action on request for permission to submit a waiver for remote only other to the Texas Education Agency, TA for Alto Bonito Elementary.
Mr. President, I move that we approve 18 and 19 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 20, consider and take possible action on resilient school support program.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 20 as presented with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Do I have a second before discussion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Go ahead, Mr. Vareal.
What is resilient school support program?
Ms. Morris is coming over to me.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. The resilient school program, it is a support the TA is providing to our school district. It was something we had to apply to be accepted. Mr. Peña, myself, Ms. Ayala, went through an interview prior to, I think it was our Easter break, that Thursday of our Easter break, we sat on a phone or Zoom interview with resilient school support. And what it is, it's like free technical support that the state provides. We had our first meeting this week, because there was a launch meeting, and what we found was that most of the schools that belong to the resilient school support are schools that want to get better and they want to improve. So it's basically getting free technical support or consultant support, all research based, free to us, and we're able to network with other school districts across the state. So the first meeting we had for us was very positive. It was me, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Ayala, and we sat on the, on the meeting, and what we found was that it was different than the meetings we have with Region One, because everybody that sat on that call is wanting to improve their school. So the conversations and the dialogues that we had were very productive. So basically, it's TA is providing support, but we do need to sign a contract letting them know that we will share data out with them and that we will follow their framework. But there is no, there's nothing that, if we don't follow it, that there's going to be some negative repercussions. It's basically technical assistance, support based on our instructional plan.
Any further discussion on item 20? All this, there's a motion by Mr. Vareal, second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 21, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Royal County City Consolidated Independent School District and Lewis Educational Concepts LLC.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 21, 22, and 23 presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Pope. Any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 24, consider and take possible action on request for permission to participate in the Texas Reading Academies by Region One Education Center Cohort Number Two for the 2021 to 2022 school year, pending availability of funds.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, although I think there, we do have a little correction to make on item 25. It should read years 2020 through 2021 and 2020 through, 2021 to 2022.
Then I amend my motion with the, with the, with the adjustments that the board president said.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion there.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item, where do we go to? 29, I'm sorry. Consider and take possible action on school supplies for RGCCID students, and I need to add pending availability of funds, because the source here is SRR three. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item 29?
I saw a move.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion on item 29? And just to put on the record, I believe this is school supplies totally in $420,000, $42 per pupil, so it's a significant amount of money. So all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 30, consider and take possible action on 2021 summer school programs.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 30, item 31 and 32 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 33, consider and take possible action on dual-language staff development two-day initial training for fifth-grade teachers.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 33 as presented in our board package with a little bit of discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second before discussion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Mr. Vareal, go ahead.
Just quickly, what is the cost?
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools. The cost, Mr. Vareal, is depending on the number of participants. It's $225 per participant. Usually, we have about between 35 and 45 teachers participating, so it's about, between $10,000 and $12,000.
But you have money in your budget for that?
Yes, sir. Through Title III.
Not a problem.
Any further discussion on item 33? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Item 34, consider and take possible action on resolution regarding HB 2193. Mr. Salazar, I know you requested this item to be put on the agendas.
I did, Mr. President, board members, members of the public staff. This is something that a friend of mine who is involved with a foundation called Downs by the Border, it is a foundation that deals with children with Down Syndrome and also that are autistic. They have, they actually had this house built, House Bill 2193, and it's, that was before the Texas Legislature on Tuesday. And this House Bill, what it does is, it is going to allow students with special needs to have adaptive sports with UIL. So they will be able to compete, not just in Special Olympics, but they'll be able to continue and compete against other school districts all the way up to state, just like we do for all of our students. So it's, it's for adaptive UIL, and the beautiful part about this bill and this, both the House and Senate bill, is that they have already gotten full support from UIL. So UIL is willing to start this. It's something new, and it's, as far as I know, Royal County City will be the first school district in the state to get the resolution. And then there'll be another, you know, 1,000 school districts that are going to adopt it, but you'll be on the forefront of doing this. And I can tell you, a friend of mine that's deeply involved with this, went ahead and they testified, a couple of school board members from the Brownville Independent School District went to testify before the legislature. It's, it's a great program, and it's something that, that is long overdue, where our students that have adaptive needs are now able to compete at the state level with UIL. So, and I've got the, the only difference is it, what I put on the agenda said House Bill 2193, and it did not include Senate bill, but I did send an amendment that has a House bill and a Senate bill. It's no cost of the district. It's just showing our community that we do support children with, with special needs, and we want them to compete like all of our other children.
Is there any further discussion or question from Mr. Salazar, or a motion on item 34?
I move to approve item...
Motion by Mr. Velazquez, second by Mr. Castillo.
And also, before I forget, and I did, I don't just bring these agenda items, I did vet them with the superintendent, and the superintendent vet this item with his special education director, just so you know.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Velazquez, second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries.
Before we go to an executive session, I would just like to ask, Balthazar, I know we had a hearing to give everybody $500. Where in the meeting did we address that situation?
We could discuss that under personnel.
Okay.
In executive session, when we come out, we can vote on it and specifically say that under personnel, we're going to include this COVID stipend.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. It is now 8:16 PM.